Jared, please take rule.
Mr. Bukowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiaji.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Palmieri.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton. President Katina.
Yes.
We have fifteen members present.
Our first proclamation is going to be held for a presentation in our future meeting. Our next proclamation is being presented 13336-24.
A proclamation commending Eliza Davis on receiving the Girl Scouts Gold Award sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio.
So, thank you very much, Eliza, for coming, and thank you, councilmembers. So, I'd like to read this proclamation recognizing Eliza Davis Girl Scout Gold Awardee. Whereas founded in 1912, Girl Scouts of the United States is the prominent leadership experience for girls, and it's a leading authority on girls' healthy development. Girl Scouts builds courage, confidence, and character, and make the world a better place. The three million-member organization serves girls from every corner of the United States and territories. Girl Scouts of the U.S. also serves American girls and classmates attending American or international schools in ninety-one countries. And whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest award in Girl Scouts of the USA earned by senior and ambassador Girl Scouts, only 5.4% of eligible Girl Scouts earn this award. And whereas Eliza Davis, a current first-year student at American University in Washington, D.C., was presented the Girl Scouts Gold Award at Atrium in Prospect, PA, in May of 2024 for demonstrating extraordinary leadership through sustainable measures and take-action projects that address the important community needs. And whereas Eliza's project that earned her much recognition focused on harm reduction, a set of practical strategies and ideas aimed at reducing negative consequences associated with drug use. And whereas with a strong sense of justice and critical eye, Eliza has always been concerned for communities and issues that may find easier to ignore. After noticing that the information widely available regarding drug use and addiction was largely limited to the endorsement of complete absence and sobriety, she realized that an entire portion of the population was being neglected, those who already use drugs. But it doesn't have to be this way. Seemingly small individual and community efforts have enormous impacts and saved countless lives. And whereas Eliza confronted this complex public health problem through her Girl Scout Gold Award project, educating her peers on harm reduction and opiate overdose response, her audience gained practical skills like administration to respond to opiate overdoses while she attempted to shift their perspectives on drug use and substance use as an empathetic, evidence-based harm reduction approach. And whereas Eliza has also made reference cards people can carry with them with opiate overdose signs and how to respond. Davis brought a flyer with important information about Narcan to twenty locations such as libraries, Panera Bread locations, sheet stores, and community centers. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Nita Pritzio, do hereby commend Eliza Davis on receiving the Girl Scouts Gold Award. I congratulate for her dedicating time, leadership, creativity, and effort to making this region better. In witness whereof, I have caused to seal the county to be affixed the seventeenth day of December. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council for this honor and my parents for always supporting me through all of my pursuits. Thank you.
That was the best speech. You're ready?
I'm ready.
Congratulations.
That was just malicious.
Thank you.
Okay. A proclamation recognizing John Kearns for his many years dedicated to the Riverview Community Action Corporation sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulas.
1338-24.
A proclamation recognizing Judy Ferguson for her many years dedicated to the Riverview Community Action Corporation, also sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulas.
13339-24.
A proclamation recognizing Maureen Hennekamp for her many years dedicated to the Riverview Community Action Corporation sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulas.
13340-24.
A proclamation recognizing Rhoda Warf for her many years dedicated to the Riverview Community Action Corporation sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulas.
We'll not have public comment on agenda items this evening.
First up is Tom Bailey.
My name is Tom Bailey. My wife and I live in Penn Hills. She has severe asthma. She's lived all over the country, but it got worse when I brought her here. I come here to ask your votes to permit the Health Department to increase permit fees and to give them the money they need to become fully staffed and reduce their pending permit backlog, specifically the release of 2.5 PM and the benzene from Claretton Coke Works. I recognize three no votes are likely tonight, one by Mr. Macy, one by Mr. Palmieri, and I expect Mr. DiMarco will follow suit. Mr. Palmieri has represented the Claretton District since 2011, and he regularly votes to reduce the Health Department's money. Now, he made his money as a barber, and he tonight will vote against the 1971 motion to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the Environmental Rights Amendment, which says that Pennsylvanians are entitled to clean air and pure water. Now, even you, Mr. Palmieri, wouldn't say that the air in Allegheny County is clean. And I know you wouldn't say that the water in the Mon River is clean, but you're going to vote against this tonight, I expect. Now, Mr. Macy is a former U.S. Steel Attorney, excuse me, U.S. Steel employee. He's a member of the Steel Workers Union for fifteen years, and he likes the world the way it was in those years when he worked there. So, he votes routinely to protect U.S. Steel and the Union from any regulations that may threaten it, in his opinion. So, Mr. Macy feels that despite the U.S. EPA requesting 2018 for the Health Department to get more funding through the fees, he knows better than the EPA's environmental engineers, he knows better what's for Allegheny County. And Mr. DiMarco, Mr. DiMarco is one of the leaders of the Republican Party here in Allegheny County. And I expect that he would not be able to vote for this increase, even if he wanted to, because the Republican Party, through its new national leader, is against environmental regulation. So, despite the Health Director you folks chose, who is a medical doctor, who has her master's degree in public health, and has practice in this area, the three of you will say, no, they don't really need that increase, that you know better. So, my question to you is who here will vote for it? Who here will vote and support this measure so that people like my wife can breathe easier, and maybe we will have clean air and pure water, as the Constitution said we should?
Next up is Karen Burns Retigliano.
Not here.
What's the name?
Karen Burns Retigliano.
I didn't hear you. Good evening. My name again is Karen Burns Retigliano, and I'm here as a Plum resident and as a proud member of the Pennsylvania Interfaith Impact Network, or PIN. I'm here on behalf of our thirty-one congregations and nonprofit organizational members across Pittsburgh to urge you to vote yes to increase the fees charged by the Allegheny County Health Department for the Title V permits required by the EPA of our area's polluters. As Paul Klein has noted, the work required by the Health Department engineers to issue permits is beyond considerable, requires professional expertise, and the Health Department as issuer has been understaffed and backlog for now going on seven years. Unconscionable, actually, from the point of view of the citizens of Pittsburgh who depend on the Health Department to prevent as much toxin emission by polluters as possible into our region's air and monitor their compliance with the current Clean Air Act advances meant to protect us. Our collective health, and that means your own as well, depends on up-to-date permit management. You can do this, councilmembers. The EPA warned the Allegheny County Health Department in 2018 to increase fees to properly fund the permit engineering staff, get rid of unconscionable workloads and backlogs in permit management. Success of county councils have kicked the can of the Health Department functional needs down the road. Meanwhile, Pittsburgh's citizens' rate of breathing diseases and related ailments in both children and adults has soared, damaging our community's well-being and Pittsburgh's reputation as a livable city. Egregious polluters have been fined heavily, but investment in cleaner plants have lagged. We need the Allegheny Health Department to be able to do its job properly, and that is within your hands. Voters have entrusted you to govern well, and do not perpetuate this calamity. We urge you to navigate your responsibilities and challenges to fund our future with cleaner air in mind. Find a way to do the right thing by us. Do not cave to the self-interests of profiteers who endanger us. Please pay attention. Vote yes to raise the fees for the Title V permits. Thank you.
Brian Juice.
Brian Juice Choos? No, not here.
Arthur Thomas.
My name is Art Thomas. I live in Claretton, Pennsylvania. It's once called the armpit of the universe in a movie called A Deer Slayer. I've lived there for over seventy years, close to seventy-five years, and I briefly had chemistry in high school. And one thing I learned, what goes up, comes down. Now, stuff has been going up in the air, all different kind of chemicals. It's not just the sulfur dioxide, it's the benzines and everything else. And it comes back down. Now, they had a little thing in East Palestine where a train wrecked. They replaced the dirt and everything. It was just an acute exposure. Mon Valley has been having a long-term exposure for a long time. We come, I'm a member of V-CAM, by the way, Valley Clean Air Now. We've given out over a thousand air purifiers in the Mon Valley. So, at least when people in the Mon Valley go in their houses, they can breathe clean air. This is ridiculous to let industry in the valley, I'm not going to mention any names because we've got more than one, but it's ridiculous to let them keep on going like they're going. I mean, come on, what's a human life worth? It's worth a lot more than what you would steal to spend out in fines. And I think you guys ought to vote the right way. You know what's right and what's wrong. And to get behind a company because they know what wheels agree is ridiculous. You need to be worried about the people that are voting for you, putting you in office, and just generally care about you, you know what I mean? My wife is in rehab right now. She has neuroscarcoledosis. I looked it up a long time back, and neuroscarcoledosis was directly linked to people using coal byproducts on Red Dog Roads in the rural South. Oil dried, it came back up as dust, and people breathe this stuff. So, they had high instances of scarcoledosis. Right now, Mon Valley, we're in the top 1% for cancer. Our children have three times as much asthma as children in other places. I think somebody ought to be able to link this dirty air, dirty water, to what's going on. You can't even eat fish out of the Mon River. I think they allow you one fish a month or something, if that. It's ridiculous what we're doing to this planet. And, you know, it's on the people in charge, because you can do better than what you're doing.
Johnny Perryman.
Johnny Perryman? Not here? Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm sure that all of the councilmembers know how they're going to vote, no matter what we say. A lot of times, we have issues where it's Republicans against Democrats, or one side against the other, and a person will vote based on the side that they're on. Now, when you have winners and losers, the fight is never over. The only time the fight is going to be over is when both sides win. Now, we say that we have a money problem in Allegheny County. Now, you know more about your money problems than I do, but there are other solutions to it. And I passed out a paper that has a poem I wrote on the front of it, and also it has a solution that I think would work to raise more money in the state of Pennsylvania so you wouldn't have to worry about raising the fines. And that's something that we used in the state of Washington, and it worked, and it got the governor position on the cabinet back there. But if you don't know how to handle the money in this state so it's more professional the way it's been handled, and if the only way that we can keep the Allegheny Health Department doing the job it's supposed to be doing is by raising the fines, then I would say, yes, raise the fines, but I would really prefer to see you do some things where both sides work together and come out with a solution that both sides can stand with, that both sides would just like, as a matter of fact. But normally, the politicians don't listen to the people talking. I've written letters to Hillary Clinton, and I've written letters to Barack Obama, and they never got them. And that thing I put in on that paper about how to adjust a budget, at the top of it was an email I was going to send to the director of the Allegheny County Health Department, but I got about four hundred and fifty emails last week, and I thought, I don't want to get it lost in that mess, and so I thought I would write it down and bring it here to you. But I want to thank you very much for letting me speak, and I know I was supposed to bring a book for Patrick Katina, but I was running late, and I didn't quite make it, but I just thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next up is Fred Bickerton.
Fred Bickerton?
Jermaine Gooden. Jay Walker?
Yes.
My name is Jay Ting Walker, and I'm an outreach coordinator of the Clean Air Council, a nonprofit environmental health organization with offices in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The Council's been working to protect everyone's right to a healthy environment for over fifty years. The Council has thousands of members, including frontline residents in Allegheny County, whose families have been harmed by pollution for generations. The Allegheny County Health Department must be reasonably funded to enable it to effectively protect public health. We have seen over the years how inadequate funding has hamstrung the ability of the department to properly create and enforce air quality regulations and permits. The Health Department is asking for facility operators who profit from polluting the air to pay appropriate fees so the Health Department can protect vulnerable communities, which includes enforcing emission limits that several operators chronically violate. The Health Department has been entrusted by the Environmental Protection Agency with these Clean Air Act responsibilities and can fulfill them only if properly funded. A fully-staffed Health Department could also potentially prevent avoidable major pollution events like the Claretton Coke Works fire by enabling sufficiently frequent and comprehensive facility inspections. The improved air quality that would result from better permits and enforcement would lead directly to reduced health harms and improved lifespans for Allegheny County residents and for workers at the facilities themselves. Allegheny County was recently in major budget discussions. There is much apprehension over raising taxes to fund county services. Here's a chance to have a win-win. The permit fee increases that the Health Department is seeking would ensure that our Title V air permitting program is appropriately funded without costing county taxpayers assent. In fact, the increased permit fees would reduce the cost to county taxpayers, including medical costs. The proposed fees are miniscule, next to the profits made by the county's largest polluters, and they would enable the Health Department to better ensure that facility operators obey the laws that protect our communities. In addition, the Title V permit fee increases would only affect operators only every five years or more, since that's how often permit renewals occur. The DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, the state regulator, and the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, have both also expressed support for the Health Department to raise these permit fees. Clean Air Council fully supports the air permit fee regulation you'll be voting on tonight. With our help, approximately two hundred and forty-eight Allegheny County residents reached out to Council directly about voting yes. We'll be informing each of them what happens with the vote after it is concluded tonight. Please vote yes to approve the increased permit fees for Allegheny County polluters. Passing this increased fee schedule will contribute greatly to ensuring a healthy Allegheny County for all. Thank you.
Next up is Angelo Toronto.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Angelo Toronto, and I'm a member of Allegheny County Clean Air Now, or ACAM. ACAM works to get better regulation of air polluters in the Neville Island area and is fully in support of the proposed Allegheny Health Department's recommendation to fully fund our local air quality program by increasing permitting and other fees on plant operators and applicants. We urge you to vote yes on Ordinance 13228-24 and Resolution 13229-24. We work with residents who are being severely harmed by air pollution coming from nearby industries. These residents feel desperate because they can't afford to move. They include residents that live across the street from a concrete batch plant in Coriopolis. Two of these residents were diagnosed with asthma in the past year. We are also working with residents in Emsworth who breathe in smoke and dust from a metal recycler across the river on Neville Island. They are also subjected to house-shaking explosions that occur at the metal recycler. A resident in McKees Rocks has to wear a respirator inside their home because of industrial odors. The industries producing these harmful emissions are not going to change the way they operate on their own. The only way they will change is through air permits that are properly written, monitored, and enforced. Those things will only happen if the Health Department has the resources they need for their air quality program. The proposed fee increases are fair and justified because they properly reflect the cost of permitting, monitoring, and enforcement. These costs should be paid by the industries that generate air pollution, not by taxpayers. We know that you are rightly concerned about the effect that these fees might have on the economy, and we also know that you are concerned about public health. These two concerns are related. Improving public health will make the county a more livable place. That will also make it a place that can better attract and retain young people. So, a yes vote for air permit fee increases is a vote for a healthier, more prosperous, and just county. Thank you.
Next up is Edward Wren.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to keep this short, so I hope you'll pay attention. I've given you written testimony, but first I just want to say that I hope that no one has come in here with their mind already made up, determined to vote against the bill which everyone else has testified against. If you have, then this is a waste of everyone's time and not doing the bill justice. In addition, I thought, as I was coming in here, that you all live here, so this bill is in your best personal and family interest to protect your own health. And I live here, too, and if I had any sense, I would move, but I've decided to plant my flag here and fight for our health and our environment, and I hope that you will do the same. So, this is what I wrote to you. "As I learn about illegal, preventable pollution, I see not only statistics, but also faces of patients whom I have cared for." I speak in favor of the bill increasing the tiny percentage of profits polluting, well, they all said the same thing. So, this is not an anti-business bill. It is a crime bill. It is a public health bill, and its overall effects will be strongly pro-business and pro-jobs for the following reason, even if taking into account only dollars and cents. One, Allegheny County has a well-deserved reputation, as you know, for having some of the worst air and other pollution in the country. It makes companies and employees less likely to locate and invest here, and this decreases our tax base, lessening health for our citizens. It forces employers to pay more for salaries and benefits to It forces employers to pay more for salaries and benefits to compensate for environmental harms. It makes workers less productive and prone to higher absenteeism, partly from having to care for sick children. It increases cost of employer-paid health insurance and payments by workers and management for co-pays and uncovered services. These reasons alone justify a unanimous vote in favor of the bill. Thanks for your careful consideration and service.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Matt Mahalik. I am the executive director of the Breathe Project, an organization consisting of over 60 regional organizations working together to clean our air in Allegheny County and promote public health, with science and data and public health information at our core. Earlier this year, a group of residents from the Mon Valley released a report using public health findings that show that soot pollution kills between 640 and 1,300 people each year in Allegheny County. Low-income communities had 33% higher proportion of these deaths than higher-income communities. Communities of color had 18% higher rates of these deaths than other communities. That's about 2 to 4 people per day. County council needs to equip our new Health Department Director and our new Board of Health with the resources needed to be successful. At a time of budget crunches, these proposed permit fee increases lower the costs of government on taxpayers and instead focuses the costs on the operators of facilities. The largest emitters can afford the fee increases and are no threat to business. U.S. Steel's 12-month trailing revenues are $12.3 billion. They pay each of their board members over $100,000 per year. They can afford to pay for a $53,000 permit every five years. That's not every year. That's $10,600 a year. A $10,000 fee out of $1.6 billion is the equivalent of asking an average Pittsburgh household to pay 42 cents per year. Does anyone really think that's enough for the steel industry to pack up and leave or lose one single job? Of course not. ACHD has been notably underfunded and understaffed. There's a backlog of these permits. Several drafts of them have sometimes been sent back by the U.S. EPA because they weren't done right, and our county needs the right expertise in order to create these permits in a successful way. Let's help our Health Department succeed with the funding it needs to protect our residents and hold industry accountable. A vote for the permit fee increase is a vote in favor of saving lives, reducing diseases, restoring our home, and initiating a more prosperous future for our county that will attract lasting investments. Thank you. Please vote yes on the ordinance for the fee increases. Have a good evening.
Good evening. I am a resident of the Bloomfield neighborhood in Pittsburgh. Mr. Walton, nice to see you in person, and thank you for your service. I hope that you've received and have been reading the comments that my neighbors and I have been filing to you on your website, urging you to vote yes to increasing permit fees for the Title V permit holders. And to all council members, thank you for listening, and I hope that you are here to vote yes on the matter at hand as well. Yes, because air quality equates to quality of life. I'm in the wellness industry. I own and operate one of the largest independent Pilates studios in the Pittsburgh region, and like yoga, meditation, and other outdoor recreational sports that require exertion, we breathe this Pittsburgh air in deeply and with the expectation that we are building and sustaining our health. These deep breaths are only healthy to the extent that our local air quality is clean. If that air is heavily laden with particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, nitrogen, dioxide, and lead, my body and your body will also be full of all of those chemicals. We need an HCHD with the capacity and budget to ensure compliance from industry such that accidents and breaches are prevented. History has shown us that applying penalties and fines after the fact are not particularly effective deterrents and do not function to maintain clean air levels. We elect you and therefore heavily rely on you and your good judgment. We need your courage to stand up to large corporate interests and in support of the ACHD's assigned task of carrying out clean air standards in Western PA. You help set the conditions for our quality of life. Saying yes on this vote will make a difference. I hope you and your loved ones are well and free from the kinds of conditions and diseases that are linked to poor air quality. Many individuals in several key communities, such as Clerton, are not. I urge you to vote yes to protect Allegheny Health County citizens, young and old, in all parts of town, especially those people living in direct proximity to one of these 28 industry facilities. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Uday Palet.
I'd like to hand out something to the council members. May I? Hello? Candy canes are good for their teeth, are they? Okay. My name is Thaddeus Popovich. Good afternoon or good evening. I reside at 2213 Bear Run Drive, Ohio Township. I am a member of Allegheny County Clean Air Now, Protect Franklin Park, the Justice Ministry of St. Brendan's Episcopal Church, and the Climate Reality Project. I am sharing issue to 2021 H, the magazine of the Heinz Endowments. Moment of truth. Action is needed to address environmental crisis before time runs out. Please turn to page 26, an area called "Air Sickness," where you will find two first-person accounts on how industrial air pollution harmed the health of the individuals and those around them. One of those persons pictured looks like me, and it is me. I talk about living across the Ohio River in Ben Haven, downwind from the DTE Energy Shenango Coke Plant, which is gone now, on Neville Island. I was told by resident researcher C. Arden Pope that the poor air quality caused by the plant contributed to 40% to 50% of my need to have quintuple heart bypass surgery. My cardiologist advised me to move away from this Mordor to a healthier location, which I was able to do. Meanwhile, my friend Doreen Johnson continues to live in Clerton, home to the U.S. Steel Clerton Coke Plant, the largest Coke Plant in the country. She talks about her father dying from lung cancer, a cousin who died of emphysema, a daughter who has lupus, a son who has asthma, four grandchildren with asthma. Doreen has asthma, too, plus a condition, as mentioned earlier, called neuroscarosys, which affects her nervous system. She says she would love to move and start all over, give her family a better life. Who has the money to just sprout out and move and start all over? Nobody does. She wants to take her family and give them a better life. Now, let's talk about the modern-day rubber barits. Am I okay to talk? We citizens understand that you, our council members, have been lobbied and nudged by U.S. Steel, the Allegheny Conference, the Marcellus Shell Coalition. They want you to vote no on the permit fee increases. Fancy that. They have sold their souls to the trinity of power, money, and greed. Do they care about the suffering that people like me and Doreen and her family are experiencing? No, they don't. We and others like us are collateral damage. So I want the council members to please vote yes.
Thank you. Next up is Patrick Campbell.
All right. Good evening. I'm Patrick Campbell, the executive director of the Group Against Smog and Pollution, a nonprofit advocating for clean air since 1969. And I know you're hearing so much support from residents, from environmental groups, from other nonprofit groups, and I know it's getting a little tiring. There's a lot of work to do, and it's 100 degrees in here. But I hope what you're hearing is the importance of this. I mean, it's a busy time of year. We're all out here. And I want you to understand the importance of the need to increase permit fees to fully fund the ACHD's air quality program. This program has the overwhelming support of all of these people, all of these groups that are represented here. And so by voting yes, you're voting to uphold federal law. ACHD has been delegated the authority to enforce federal and state laws and regulations pertaining to the control of air pollution in Allegheny County. And the federal Clean Air Act requires that ACHD have the adequate funding and personnel to carry out that authority. The Clean Air Act also requires that ACHD's program for Title V facilities charge fees that are sufficient to cover the cost of administering the program. Next, it's investing in our county's public health, supporting frontline communities burdened by industrial pollution. And we know you've heard from many of those constituents, many of your constituents, in these neighborhoods as you've mulled the merits of this proposal. And finally, this is empowering ACHD staff. It's imperative that you provide the men and women who work in ACHD's air quality program with the tools they need to do their jobs. Not only is it required by the Clean Air Act, it will undoubtedly help with staff retention, talent acquisition, and morale. Again, this is the final stop for a fully vetted, robustly supported proposal that has real human impacts. Please seize this opportunity to create a cleaner, healthier future for all of us. Vote yes for clean air. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kellyanne Forketic. I am a lifelong resident of Allegheny County in Elizabeth Township, District 9. I'm here to strongly urge you to vote yes to approve the proposed increase in air permit fees. This vote is critical for the future of our air quality and ultimately, the health and well-being of our communities. Allegheny County faces a clear reality. Our air quality, though slowly improving, remains among one of the worst in the entire country. Continuing to have alarming rates of respiratory illness, cancers, and premature deaths is not somewhere anyone wants to move to. The air quality program cannot protect our lungs if it's chronically underfunded and understaffed. The fee increases are fair and necessary. These fees are not new costs to taxpayers. They are paid by the major polluting industries that profit while impacting our public health. For companies like U.S. Steel, the proposed fees represent a fraction of their billion-dollar annual profits. The fee increase would be to cover air pollution violations, and the amount of fees that they have been paying every year in millions of dollars of fines would amount to what would be equal to a pay-to-pollute program. The U.S. Steel earned $2.4 billion in 2023, spent $1.65 million in lobbying, and pays its 13 board members $175,000 annually. Yet lobbyists feel that this permit fee increase would hurt them. In reality, failing to enforce air quality standards hurts us, our children, our seniors, and the most vulnerable residents who bear the brunt of poor air quality every day. This increase will allow the Health Department to process overdue permits, strengthen enforcement, and address pollution violations more efficiently. Without it, staffing shortages will persist and enforcement will weaken, reversing hard-won progress in clean air here in Allegheny County. I ask you to consider who benefits from the inaction. When we allow polluters to dictate policy, the community pays the price with our health. By voting yes, you are ensuring the Health Department has the resources it needs to hold the polluters accountable and protect our air, our health, and our future. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to support this common-sense fee increase. Vote yes.
Good evening. My name is Surya Lee, and I'm a resident of District 11. While I'm here on my own time, I work for an environmental nonprofit trying to improve the air quality of Allegheny County. I work directly with the residents who are most impacted by these polluters every day, and I promise you, they are paying attention on how you vote today. I have now worked on air quality and environmental justice issues in three states and have seen the impact that well-funded health departments can have. Failing to increase funding allows underregulated, harmful air pollutants to infiltrate our bodies, our minds, and our communities. I know their concerns over potential economic impacts, but I'm here to ease your mind. It has been proven over and over again that increasing air quality permits does not lead to job loss and instead saves millions of dollars through disease prevention. I am here to urge you to vote yes to increase the fees to properly fund the ACHD. You have a chance to improve public health and demonstrate you care about the health of your constituents. Please take it. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Phoebe Reese. I'm a resident of O'Hara Township. I also serve on the leadership team of the Climate Reality Project for Pittsburgh and southwestern Pennsylvania Chapter, which includes over 670 people throughout southwestern Pennsylvania, primarily in Allegheny County, and who all volunteer their time because they care about clean air. But I'm here speaking in my personal capacity. I'm also a parent, and I want to end a taxpayer. This is a really sensible action to take, to vote for the increase in air permit fees. And the reason you've been getting so many phone calls and letters and emails is not to bully you. It's because people care. This is something they really care about, and they're engaged in this process. And as I was walking towards the building, it's so beautiful outside this building and next door in downtown, all the beautiful lights, I was thinking, gosh, in this holiday season, our Allegheny County Council could give us a real gift tonight, a big gift for future As I mentioned, this is a really sensible gift. It's like warm fuzzy socks, except, you know, our kids, when they play outside, they can't choose whether to breathe or not. They're dependent on us. They're dependent on us to take care of the air here. And $10,000 a year for our biggest operators, that's less than they pay to repay the library parking lot, which the library needs its new parking lot. That's good, but it's not, you know, they give that generously, willingly. But supporting our Health Department, we have a brand-new health director later tonight. You know, we're going to see, are you going to approve the appointment of a whole new Board of Health? This is very exciting. These are gifts to us. Let's bring it home and pass this increase, this permit fee. Let's see. You know, I went, and alternatively, you know, there's also a cost to voting no. That's going to be more generations of kids who develop asthma. That's not an inherited disease. That's something we get from our environment. That's something we get from our environment. And that has lifelong impacts to children. And why else is it sensible? The, we want prosperity and revitalization and continued growth for our community as well. And that begins with having communities where people feel safe raising their children, where, where you stay. You know, healthy communities is, is at the, at the base of that. So, again, you know, as we were looking at those beautiful holiday lights outside, you know, I was wondering, what's the decision gonna be? Are we gonna get the gift of clean air? Or are the children of Claritin gonna get coal dust in their lungs, again, for two more years, until we can bring this up again? So, thank you. Please vote yes.
Joe Callahan.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Joe Callahan, and I am a resident of Allegheny County. And I am also a member of the Southwest PA Grassroots Town Halls. The Southwest PA Grassroots Town Halls is a group of Allegheny County grassroots organizations and residents that advocate for clean air and organize a series of virtual town halls as part of an advocacy campaign seeking redress for the ongoing air pollution that erodes the quality of life in our region. We seek to assemble a racially, economically, and geographically diverse coalition of residents and elected officials for this effort. I'm here today to present the signatures from our petition urging a yes vote on the increase in permit fees. These 324 signatures represent the most important voice in this discussion, the people and the residents who have to deal with the harmful effects, harmful effects of pollution in our region. The Clean Air Act requires ACHD to have adequate funding and personnel to enforce air pollution controls. Specifically, the law mandates that ACHD charge fees to certain facilities to cover the program's cost. The bottom line is clear. Air quality is a major public concern, and residents deserve a fully funded air quality program with the resources to adequately enforce clean air laws and protect our public health from dangerous industrial pollution. So what do you stand for? Do you stand for the health of Allegheny County residents? Or you, do you stand for the profit of the industries that pollute our air? Please vote yes. Thank you.
Natisha Washington.
Hello, everybody. As mentioned, my name is Natisha Washington. I am the Communications Manager for the Breathe Project. I am also a Wilkinsburg Council member, but I'm actually here to talk as a resident of the Mon Valley. Even though I live on the tail end of the Mon Valley, I still have to deal with the pollution that plagues it. I thankfully got a filter from Vcan that helped me sleep at night. But then I found something else that caused me not to sleep at night, and that was the number 640. That number is coming up this year because that's the number of premature deaths we have annually because of this particular matter, because of this pollution. These people are not just residents, but they are your workers, they are your children, they are your friends, they are your family. And if I told you 640 of them were going to die this year, how would you feel and would you fight just as hard for them? I am so tired. As previously an organizer in the environmental justice world of Mon Valley, I'm tired of hearing the stories. I had to call at least 20 people a week when I was an organizer, and I kept hearing stories of people that wanted to move and needed to move because their children were getting sick, that had to watch their grandparents and their parents die slowly, not knowing if next year they were gonna have an asthma attack or a heart attack or die of cancer or even be diagnosed with cancer. I'm tired of hearing people losing all of their close family members to them, and yet we are still delaying an effort to help cure that. We are delaying money to give to your department to help your residents so that they can live another year or at least try to live another year without pollution plaguing them. And I need y'all to understand that this pollution has no boundaries. It has no zip codes. And if it's hurting us here in the Mon Valley, it will eventually get to everybody else. And then it won't just be our families that are passing away. It will be your families too. So, I ask you something that Mr. Thomas had brought up. What is this life worth? Is 640 lives worth $10,000 a year for the people that are causing them to die every year? Is it worth your workers not going to work? Is it worth your children not being able to go to school? Is it worth you not being able to bike ride or jog around your community? Because that's what it's been worth to me and thousands of other people who aren't able here to speak for themselves. And I really need you to think this year and next year, when you see that amount of money, when you see these fees not coming in for your department that will suffer from this lack of money, I need you to wonder, is it worth it? And was it worth it to you? Because for me, it's worth it to stand here and talk against this issue, to stop this spread, to give a better reputation to my city than it being the cancer city of the northern region of USA, for it to be the worst polluted place in the nation. I need that to end, and I need y'all to help that happen. Thank you.
Elias Khan.
Hi, folks. A lot of you guys know me. I'm Elias Khan. I live in Swissoh Park. And you probably know that I'm a college student here at Carnegie Mellon. You can probably also tell that I was raised out of town because of the way I say pants. But what you may not know is that when I would come down here to celebrate the holidays with my Yinzar family, I have been hospitalized more than once as a result of my asthma. And trust me, having an asthma attack and then having to go to the hospital while you're sitting at the Thanksgiving dinner table carving up the turkey is not a fun experience. A 10 out of 10, do not recommend. So, as we're going into this holiday season, you all have an opportunity to save a lot of kids like me a lot of trouble. Growing up with asthma, growing up with complications to your health as a result of environmental factors is not anything that any kid should have to go through here in Allegheny County. And each and every one of you, some of you have probably had some of those health complications. Some of you have family who have those health complications. You all know how terrible it must be for those folks growing up like that. You all know how terrible it was for me in some small way, growing up like that. Another thing you may not know about me is that I am quite the fiscal conservative. And so even when I'm talking with my conservative and Republican colleagues at Carnegie Mellon, we oftentimes agree on the need to cut spending, on the need to reduce deficits, on the need to be frugal and sensible in our policy when regards to money. And in this particular case, I stand before you as an example of how you can hit two nails on the head with a single hammer in a single blow. Because you can help reduce Allegheny County's deficit and handle a lot of these shortages in the Allegheny County Health Department while also saving kids like me the trouble of coughing up their dinner at the Thanksgiving table. So if you have compassion for not only the poor workers in the Allegheny County Health Department who are sitting there working their bums off trying to, you know, handle all of this backlog of permits, while also feeling very sorry for the Allegheny County taxpayer, as I know all of us, I'm sure, do for having to pay so much for these corporations that are constantly filling our air with garbage, and also for the poor little folks like me who don't wanna cough up their turkeys, then you should vote yes to this fee increase. I've talked with many of you individually. Some of you I have not had the pleasure to do so with yet. I will. I'll get around to each and every one of you. But from our conversations, I've learned that all of you value your families, your communities, and this county. Demonstrate to me that value tonight because you have a golden opportunity. Happy holidays, folks.
Thank you. Joshua Ash. Joshua Ash.
Ready? Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Joshua Ash. I'm the Director of the Environmental Law and Policy Clinic at the University of Pittsburgh. And I, some of you might know this, some of you might not, but we had the pleasure of working with a lot of the Vcan members that you've heard of from this afternoon. And, you know, I don't think I need to rearticulate several of the points they've had about, like, just the level of impact that they see from facilities in their neck of the woods. But what I, and I'm also a big fan of not repeating other points. But the thing that I, I think we haven't said yet is just reframing this as an opportunity. And this really is a win-win. And a lot of the work that the clinic does actually is in this space of sustainable business and all the opportunities for Allegheny County to reinvent itself as a clean industrial hub. And I can talk and harp on that all day. I think it's very exciting. And I think we have a lot of potential there. But we can't ignore all the other very real health disparities that we have to deal with. And another thing that I know in having conversations with business leaders in this community is there is a very strong subsector of people who stop listening when you start saying the word green or pollution. I know you're out there somewhere, some of you are. And I'm trying to speak specifically to those folks who might just have that sort of clanned-up reaction where they say, nope, I am very protective of this industry. I've lived here, and I know the importance of the steel industry, for instance. I cannot do anything that would hinder that industry. And we're past that. And I can, I'm just, I think it's really important to reemphasize the excitement in the moment we are in terms of industry and government working together to achieve this better goal and this better end. And anyway, I, I think that government agencies need support to do that. You have a Health Director, I believe, who's willing to engage with the community. We saw that for the first time when we all presented in Claritin. I think that's amazing start. But I don't know if you've ever dived into the details of a Title V permit or if you ever actually got to the end of one. Congrats, they're enormous and extremely complicated. But you need a ton of resources to do this well and to transition to a better space. So I feel like this is an obvious win-win. But for anybody out there who's thinking, no, we can't possibly do something to harm this industry or any industries in this county, I think we're not there. I think we're in an exciting space, and this is an opportunity, and it should be viewed as such. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dana Seiler. Dana Seiler.
Hi. My name is Dana Seiler. I'm from the Squirrel Hill neighborhood of Pittsburgh, and I'm a mom. And I'm also a volunteer with bipartisan organization, Citizens Climate Lobby. But I'm here acting as an individual. I urge you to vote yes on the proposal to fully fund the Allegheny County Health Department's air quality program. Because, you know, as you guys know, our region, according to the American Lung Association, ranks the most polluted in the mid-Atlantic for daily and year-round particle pollution. I'm here today because I care about my neighbors, whether they live in Braddock or Squirrel Hill or Claritin. Because caring about our kids getting asthma from air pollution, this should be an everybody issue across the board. Caring about our seniors having clean air to breathe, this should be an everybody issue. There are mornings when I wake up in my neighborhood and walk outside, and the air just smells bad, like, like rotten eggs or something. And on these mornings, when I look at my air quality meter, you know, we're in the, somewhere between the moderate unhealthy levels of air quality pollution. There are days in the summer when my mom, who takes the bus around the city, doesn't come to visit her grandchildren because the air quality is so bad. This is hurting our seniors. This is hurting our kids. So I urge you to vote yes on the proposal to fully fund the Allegheny County Health Department's air quality program. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda Wilson.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Wanda Wilson. I'm a resident of Allegheny County in the 14th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh. I testify today on behalf of Penn Environment, Research, and Policy Center, a statewide citizen-based environmental organization. I urge council to approve the permit fee rate increase for the region's largest air industrial operators as proposed by the County Health Department and affirmatively recommended by the Committee on Health and Human Services. This critical fee upgrade will ensure that air polluters in the region pay their fair share for their emissions, providing a funding source to cover the department's expenses to regulate and enforce local air pollution laws. With poor air quality an ongoing issue in the county, it's important that the Health Department's air program has the necessary resources to properly review applications, issue permits, and provide the required oversight. Some have argued that these common sense fee increases in this proposal will put a financial strain on the companies having to pay them. Nothing could be farther from the truth. For example, U.S. Steel's Claritin Plant currently pays $8,000 for the facility's Title V permit and releases 1.1 million pounds of toxic emissions into the air. Under the proposed fee increases, the new annual fee would be $55,000, just 3,000ths of a percent of U.S. Steel's reported earnings of $2.14 billion in 2023. This facility has had tens of thousands of violations of its pollution permits, requiring massive enforcement efforts by ACHD that cost real money. The polluters should pay the costs of ensuring compliance with the law when there are ongoing violations, not the taxpayers of Allegheny County. For smaller facilities that emit less than 50 tons per year, the current annual fee of $8,000 will only increase to $15,000. This will ensure the largest facilities are the focal point of the fee increases. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. And I urge council to vote yes on the fee increase to protect the health of all of us in this room and everyone in Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have the approval of minutes 13342-24.
I apologize.
I apologize, we did have the one individual who signed up.
Oh, he did.
For Clerton pollution generally, Jonathan Mulcany.
Not here, anyway.
Not here, anyway. That's a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6, 2024 regular meeting of council.
Make that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 13343-24.
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 19, 2024 regular meeting of council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All of the nominations being presented tonight are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read them all at this time. Hearing none, go ahead.
This first group is all to the Housing Advisory Committee for terms to run through January 14 of 2028, and all are sponsored by the chief executive. 13322-24 is the appointment of County Councilmember Michelle Nacaretti-Chapkus. 13323-24 is the appointment of Dr. Noble Massarou. 13324-24 is the appointment of Bob Damewood. 13325-24 is the appointment of Dwight Bodorf. 13326-24 is the appointment of Megan Hammond. 13327-24 is the appointment of Sophia Bermeo. 13328-24 is the appointment of Sonya Tillman. 13329-24 is the appointment of John Katz. 13330-24 is the appointment of David F. Anufer. 13331-24 is the appointment of Charlize Smith. 13332-24 is the appointment of Jalloh Rucker. 13333-24 is the appointment of Devin Getz. And 13334-24 is the appointment of Gail Schwartz. The last one, 13341-24, is approving the appointment of Emily Rozatskiewicz as a public director of the Allegheny County Conservation District for a term effective through December 31, 2027, also sponsored by the chief executive.
Unfinished business. Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading. I believe that Ms. Pritsio may wish to abstain from voting on our own reapportments, so I'd like the clerk to read that nomination first.
13288-24 is approving the reappointment of Anita Pritsio to the Allegheny County Conservation District for a term to be effective through December 31, 2025, sponsored by the chief executive.
Councilmember Nacaretti-Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on December 12 and affirmatively recommended this appointment, reappointment, and I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Futulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nacaretti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Abstain.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no zero, with one abstention. Appointment passes.
Thank you. If there are no objections, I'd like to address all of the remaining nominations together with a single motion to approve. Any objections? Seeing none.
Are you just doing the Conservation District ones?
Or is it just the Conservation District?
Which ones were we including in this, Jared?
I, council could do it in any fashion they want to. If you want to break it up by body to which people are being appointed, that is feasible. If you want to do all at one, that's feasible. It's pleasure of the body.
We can do them all individually.
Could we do the Conservation District as a group for the remainder of the individuals?
Three.
I go along with that.
Okay, let's do the three for the Conservation District at this point in time. Is there a motion to approve the three for the Conservation District?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call for this?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so then we'll go back and do 13269-24.
That's approving the appointment of James R. Byrne Jr. to the Accountability Conduct and Ethics Commission for a term to commence on December 18, 2024, and be effective through December 18, 2029, sponsored by President Katina.
Is there a motion, Councilmember Nacaretti-Chapkus?
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on December 12 and affirmatively recommended. I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 13293-24.
Approving the reappointment of Dr. Jolette Portlock to the Allegheny County Board of Health for a term to be effective through January 13, 2029, sponsored by the chief executive.
I assume there's going to be objections, possibly to a few of these, so do we need to do them individually or as a group?
Final objection is the 13298-24.
So we'll call, can we do that one separately and do the other ones as a group? Okay. So we'll do 1329, 12, 13, 13293-24, 139, 13294-24, 1395-24, 13296-24, 13297-24, 13299-24, 13300-24, and 13301-24.
Should I read all those titles?
Yes.
Okay. 13293-24 is the reappointment of Dr. Jolette Portlock to the Allegheny County Board of Health for a term effective through January 13, 2029, sponsored by the chief executive. All of these actually are for the same term, all through January 13, 2029. 13294-24 is the appointment of Dr. Daramendez. 13295-24 is the appointment of Dr. Elizabeth Cuevas. 13296-24 is the appointment of Dr. Graham Snyder. 13297-24 is the appointment of Dr. Kalud F. Solomon. 13299-24 is the appointment of Dr. Michael Jonas. 13300-24 is the appointment of Laura Dagley. 13301-24 is the appointment of Lisa Scales.
Councilmember Nacaretti-Chapkus?
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on December 11, 2024 and affirmatively recommended these appointments and the one reappointment. I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, yeah, I would like to just make a point here that I don't believe that ever before, that I'm aware of in the Health Department's history, have they completely wiped out almost the entire board. And having talked to former members of the board, they've talked about how long it takes for new members to really get up to speed because of all the issues and the things that they work on over there. I'm concerned that the administration did this. They didn't take in place anybody with food safety experience on this board, yet this is something that the Health Department has to oversee. They didn't put anybody on this board with restaurant experience or expertise, again, which is something that this board has to oversee. Just very disappointed in the entire process. I think the public needs to understand what's going on, and I just don't know because Dr. Portlock, Portlock, I apologize for butchering the pronunciation there, was the most recent nominee there. So I don't know that she has the capability to be able to bring all these other folks up to speed as much as possible. So, you know, that's my big concern, is we're taking a completely changing out, you know, everybody that's over there. And anybody here knows, whether it's in government, whether it's in business or whatever, when you do something like that, you lose so much institutional knowledge that it's difficult to ever be able to, you know, recapture that. So that's my big concern, and that's my big issue with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Sorry, go ahead.
I apologize, I apologize, President Katina. I did raise my hand as well. I thank you for your, this opportunity. I would like to, my comments echo my colleague, Mr. DiMarco, as well, but it's, I will have to say, these appointments, they have very impressive resumes. Their qualifications are impeccable, no question. And as one wise councilperson said, it's the executive. She's allowed her picks, and I get that, I totally do. But I would say this, there is a missing piece, piece of pizza perhaps, but a missing piece nonetheless, as Mr. DiMarco, as Councilman DiMarco has said, the restaurant and food service industry. There was on previous, in previous administrations and on previous boards, representation of that nature. And the, one of the core services of the Allegheny County Health Department has been food service and food safety. This is, there is no one representing the food service industry on this new board. They're very intelligent. There's three epidemiologists. It's impressive. Like I said, I can't use that word enough. I'll try not to use it anymore. But the responsibilities of the Health Department for, in food service industry, they regulate food safety measures, and they also issue permits. And issuing of permits is a major revenue source in Allegheny County because of the many restaurants, food trucks, cafeterias, and the like that exist in this county. And without someone with some background in that venue, I think we are losing, again, some of the institutional knowledge, but we are losing accountability, and we're losing someone who knows what to do. I joke around to my friends that I do have a law degree, and I have a food safety license. And the only one hanging up is my food safety license, because that's my, that's what I do. But it's important, and I am going to urge the administration to look into this and see if we can fill the gaps somehow. Because I am hearing from many people in the restaurant industry, the food critic, not food critic, but the food director of the Pittsburgh Magazine, as well as people in the sphere of influence in which I exist, which is the restaurant industry, there are permitting backlogs, and there, which is causing a delay in opening. It's, and there are people who have language barriers, who are also having problems getting permits, who are trying to open food trucks and new restaurants. I myself am helping a gentleman who's trying to open up a Mexican restaurant in a former space that Serpita occupied. He's a great guy, and he cannot get his inspection to start his business and get it open. And I'm really trying to help him, but it is very frustrating. So I'm asking, Ernest is in the room right now, I'm asking you to consider taking that message back to the executive. We need some voice, because we don't want to lose these restaurants and the people who work in them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I just have a question, based off of something that was brought up by my colleagues. It seems like folks are mixing up the Board of Health and the Allegheny County Health Department. And so I just want to be clear that permitting inspections are done by the Allegheny County Health Department. We are voting on appointments to the Allegheny County Board of Health. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Two different things.
Thank you.
If I can respond to that, though? I do understand that, but the prior board had a representative from the restaurant industry who was a person who could take the message to, to the group you're referring to. I do understand that, and thank you very much. I have attended many meetings myself, and like I said, I work in that industry. And if there's no one on the board who has a sensitivity and a skill set and lived experiences, how could they possibly understand the frustration of a new or budding restaurant owner if they haven't had some sort of lived experience with that? So it was an encouragement, and I think that I did indicate that everyone on the board is highly qualified. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Would you like to go first?
Go ahead.
Chairman.
Oh, I just wanted to say, so there is a food safety committee, and I think it would be well-served by Councilmember Filiagi's participation on that, if there's room in availability. So just to put a plug in for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Grisbeck?
I'll just say, you know, my comments from my colleagues are well-taken, and I think that's a good perspective to point out. As someone who, you know, did take the time to attend that meeting and ask questions of these members of the Board of Health, I felt that they were all very highly qualified, like you said. But one thing that was lacking from the Board of Health previously, and that I personally would contend is a larger issue for Allegheny County than food safety, is air quality and public health. And that's a perspective that we largely lacked previously, and it's something that now we really have on this board where we didn't before. And I think that, yes, I agree with, you know, Councilman DiMarco, I think those words came out of my mouth. And, you know, there is a lack of experience now, right? And I think there is going to be some sort of gap there. But I think, on the flip side of the coin, in one of our biggest issue areas, which is air quality, we now have people with infinitely more experience, right? You can get up to speed on a board, or just like county council, relatively quickly if you put the time in, like I think these people will, and I think they are well-prepared to do. But what you can't do is quickly get up to speed on issues like air quality, issues that, you know, take going to university and getting your master's and your doctorate, and like many of these people did, getting your MD in as well. And so I think that will situate us, maybe not in the immediacy, but in the long term, better than we were previously. Thank you.
Chairman. Go ahead.
I find it very interesting that we spent a reasonable amount, an amount of time talking about the need for diversity and, and representation from all spheres of the business world and the work world in terms of participation on the board, the Allegheny Board of Directors, and the Health Department, and its interaction and operation with the Health Department. I find it very disconcerting that those kinds of sentiments aren't reflected in the county council staff. I've made this issue on numerous occasions. When we look at the Allegheny County Council staff, there is no African American on the county council staff. And I find it repugnant. I find it that we want to talk about equity and opportunity in this sector, but we don't want to talk about it in how we do business. I find it very disingenuous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Go ahead.
I have a question. Are there any members of this council on the Health Board?
No.
Well, there you go, Ernest. Maybe that should be something in a priority. You've got a person right here that's highly qualified, and I hate to say this, but so am I. I've got 47 years in the food industry. So maybe you might want to consider putting one of the members of this council on the Health Board. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded at this point in time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So now we'll have 13298-24.
Approving the appointment of Dr. Margaret Larkin's pedigree to the Allegheny County Board of Health for a term to be effective through January 13, 2029, sponsored by the chief executive.
Councilmember Nacaretti-Chapkus?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on December 11, 2024 and affirmatively recommended Dr. Larkin's pedigree to this appointment. I would like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing no discussion. Let's take a roll call on this one.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Futulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nacaretti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no zero. The nomination passes.
Thank you. We'll now, Committee on Economic Development and Job Creation for the second reading, 13284-24.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny amending the Somerset at Frick Park Tax Increment Financing Cooperation Agreement, sponsored by the chief executive.
Councilmember Bekowski?
The Committee on Economic Development and Job Creation met on December 4 and affirmatively recommended this. And if I could just say quickly, these, both of these are similar to the ones we handled in the past where the, the schedules expired. This is housekeeping.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Futulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nacaretti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
13308-24.
A resolution of the County Council of Allegheny County dissolving the Westport Tax Increment Financing District and authorizing related actions, sponsored by the chief executive.
Councilmember Bekowski?
The Committee on Economic Development and Job Creation met on December 4 and affirmatively recommended. I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Futulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
supplementing Article 403 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, entitled "County Manager," in order to establish transparent, publicly accessible database of seats available on authorities, boards, commissions, and other entities to which the Chief Executive or council has the authority to nominate or make appointments, sponsored by councilmembers Hallam and Grisbeck.
Councilmember Futulis?
Well, this was discussed in committee last week, and it left the committee with an affirmative recommendation to this council.
Thank you. So you'd like to make that motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
I'd like to be out as co-sponsor, please.
Okay. Anyone out? You two?
No, I don't want to be out, but I wish I thought of it. Thanks.
I'd like to be out.
Did you get all those, Jared?
I have Ms. Nakareti Chapkus, Mr. Klein, Mr. Paul Mary, Mr. Paul Messina, Mr. Macy, and Ms. Pritsio. And Mr. Fattulis. That it?
Okay. Let's do a roll call, please.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fattulis?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Is 15, no 0. The bill passes.
Committee on the Health and Human Services for the second reading. I believe you'd like to make a statement, Councilmember Klein.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. The, the particular piece of this ordinance that we are considering pertains to the Human Relations Commission, and specifically, we're looking at adjustment.
This is a special.
Sorry about that. Let's go back to where we were. And let me begin this evening by saying this. To all of you who have come to council this evening to speak, I offer my very sincere gratitude for your remarks this evening, and, and also for all that you do, and all that you have done in the service of trying to create a more habitable planet, beginning right here in Allegheny County. But we do have a matter to consider that, once again, puts me in uncharted waters, which is not unusual. I don't know why it falls to me to find myself there. So obviously, this is a bit of municipal governance 101, and what we're looking at right now is a, a vote that, to be taken, will require, will require 10 votes, rather than our typical eight votes, which would be a majority on council. Without outing anybody, I can say with great confidence that we do have eight votes, but eight is not 10. And so we are now at a moment where we have some decisions to make. I mean, unless a member of council has been flipped as a result of what you, the public, have had to say this evening in terms of a change in votes. But if not, then at this point in time, I don't feel that, I don't believe that we have 10. So what are our options? So if we put it up to a vote, and it is voted down, then we have to start the process over again, which would require the Board of Health to introduce, introduce a new regulation. The Board of Health meets once a month, and my concern is that we are into a longer and more laborious process, because then the new regulation would come to council, would have to be referred to committee, and then the work that we've been doing up to this point would have to start anew. Sorry to get too far down into the weeds, but, you know, I'm just kind of laying this out, because there will be lots of questions. The other option is to ask our president to refer it to a committee, and that would be the Health and Human Services Committee, that has been working on this now for the past two and a half months, to reconsider, revisit, and then reconvene in January to, once again, consider this measure that we are considering here this evening. So my inclination is, at this point in time, to send it back to committee, of which I am chair, and I could possibly continue to be chair in January, rather than starting all over from ground zero, and attempting to go through this process of having the board develop a regulation. There is the possibility, I'm not certain of this, that they would, once again, have to open the stage for public comments. And so we might be talking about finding ourselves further down the road, looking at this again in spring or in late spring. Whereas if we sent it back to committee, the committee can, once again, take this up in January. So my thinking at this point is that that would probably be what would make the most sense, rather than having it face a certain death here. So I would turn to Council President Katina, if you'd be so inclined to make that referral.
So 1328-24, and 13229-24, at the request of the chair, will be sent back to Health and Human Services. Moving on to the Committee on Health and Homelessness for the second reading, 13317-24.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 215, entitled Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Article 5, entitled Human Relations Commission, in order to bolster the ability of the Allegheny County Human Relations, Relations Commission in assuring all persons enjoy the full benefits of citizenship and are afforded equal opportunities for employment, housing, and use of public accommodations, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Thank you. I know there's been lots of issues over the past few days, trying to get clarification on this, trying to get a lot of different things. And I thank Ernest for everything he's done with this bill. I mean, it's, it's been a monumental effort trying to get to where we need to be, but at this point in time, I'm going to refer that back to the Committee on Housing and Homelessness as well.
Point of personal privilege, President Katina? I would like to make a motion to pull this, this bill back out of committee, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
I just want to clarify that this bill was affirmatively recommended in my committee, unanimously by the committee members who were in attendance. I think this is another no-brainer. We already let down one no-brainer tonight. But really what this is, is just tiny changes to the Human Relations Code to allow us to enforce housing discrimination. And I think it's a no-brainer, so I would like to, a vote to pull it from committee.
It has to be referred to the committee first.
It just was.
No. And committee has to act upon it. And if it does not act upon it, then you can make that motion at, at the next meeting. But you can't, it's, it's out of order now, Councilwoman.
But it has been at least 60 days since the bill was introduced, and therefore I can pull it from committee.
It's going back to committee at this point. Okay?
Okay, we, I just, for the record, we are leaving potentially tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table, if we do not approve this by the end of the year. So I just want to, on the record, really express my frustration here.
Point of inquiry. Could, could we do, amend the agenda to, to bring this, at least to, to a vote? Could I make a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll second that. The president has the absolute power to refer it to committee.
Can you please cite the rules of council that say that the president has absolute power to re-refer bills to committee?
I can. The president shall have the following power to refer all proposed legislation to the proper committee. There's no exception.
So that's the initial referral, which I do not dispute, that when a bill is originally referred to committee, the president does have the right to determine which committee that goes to. But once it is affirmatively recommended from committee, or negatively recommended, and pulled from the committee and sent to the full council, are you saying that the president has ultimate authority and could forever stop a bill from ever being voted on in this council?
No, if it goes back to committee, which is going to, there's a procedure by which the council can pull it from committee. But you first have to have the meeting of the committee after the referral of the president.
Okay, can you please tell me where that says that in the rules of council, that we have to have a committee meeting first before we can pull it?
Because he has the right to refer it back to the committee.
I understand that, but in incidents where a committee meeting is never held by a committee chair about a specific bill, council is still able to pull that bill from committee with a two-thirds vote at any time, or with a simple majority at, after 60-day period? Why is this different?
Because he's referring it back.
So you're saying there's a specific provision that says when it is re-refered, that the rules are different than a normal pull?
No, he has an absolute power to refer it back, council.
And we, as council, have an absolute power to pull from committee with a simple majority after 60 days?
After you have a meeting after the referral.
But, sorry, for, just for clarification, can you answer my question about why that's different than, let's say, a bill is referred to committee from the jump, the committee chair, because we've done this in the past, the committee chair never has a committee meeting on it, and therefore council pulls it from the committee because the committee chair is refusing to ever hear it? Why is that allowed?
But that's not happening here.
But it's the same thing.
Well, it's not happening. He's referred to committee, the committee has to act upon it. If they don't act, then you can.
So by what?
My ruling, council.
Point of order, President Katina.
Are you understanding what he's saying here?
I, I am, and I do not think that it's, there's any productivity in continuing to question the, what our solicitor has said, and what our president has done. So I would ask to move on from the subject. The president has made his decision to refer it back to committee, and I think we can talk amongst ourselves, but this isn't productive at this point, and I would ask to move on.
I tend, I tend to agree. As much, as much as I want to slap Pat Katina, I don't think it serves any useful purpose in us, in us having this debate. It's not going to happen. It's a waste, it's a waste of time to, to move on. We're gonna, it's gonna go back to committee. We can move from that point if it's not, if it's not heard, if it's not addressed. But we're not, we're not going to resolve this tonight. Let's go.
First of all, it would be too late if we do this next year to get the reimbursement money. We will be, again, leaving money on the table. But I am not addressing Councilman Walton right now. I would just like to, for the record, note that I dispute the solicitor's interpretation of the rules of council that talk, talk about an absolute right to refer. I have nowhere in the rules of council seen an absolute right to refer, let alone to lump a re-referral and a referral into the same category. So I would just like to, for the record, note my dispute with your interpretation of that.
Okay, for the record, so that's going back to housing and homelessness. Liaison reports. Any liaison reports this evening? Hearing, none. New business ordinances or resolutions, 13344-24.
An ordinance of the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying revisions of Article 3 of the Allegheny County Health Department, Rules and Regulations Concerning Food Safety, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
That will go to Health and Human Services. Any new business?
No.
Notification of contracts, 13345-24.
A communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of November 2024.
Receive info.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Public comment on general items at this point?
First up is Elaine Washington.
Not here.
Sherlina Thomas.
Not here.
Beth Foringer. Glenn Grayson. Wen Chen Zhao. Benjamin Chizar. Candace Skelly. Matthew Cotter. John Kestowitz.
John Kestowitz, 828 JNC Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15206. What are the mental health needs of our correctional officers, and what mental health services would be most relevant and of use to our officers? I have already described to you the high suicide and PTSD rates of correctional officers, and their very low life expectancy compared to the rest of the country, and even compared to the police and the military. An important question is, why establish a mental health program for our correctional officers that speak to their needs and would be a relevant service they would take, they would take advantage of? The Department of Justice provides five reasons. First, financial savings, less call-offs, less officer burnout, more retention. Two, improved officer work performance, tolerance and concentration increases, morale improves, and officers become more productive. Three, increased institutional safety, less turnover and sick time increases staffing numbers, which improve safety. Four, improved relations with the union. Unions would like to see the instituting of relevant and effective mental health services to increase retention, decrease sick time, and decrease the exorbitant amount of forced overtime the officers are experiencing now. Five, demonstrated concern for correctional officers. Officers would come to believe decision-makers are seeing them more as human beings with human needs, instead of as a number or a cost factor. What are the barriers to officers receiving relevant and effective mental health services? The Department of Justice identifies three reasons. First, the officer's perception of stigma in using mental health services. Second, the officer's concern that by disclosure of mental health problems, the officer's security on the job will be affected by such disclosure. Decision-makers have not made the, and third, decision-makers have not made the mental health needs of our correctional officers a priority. The National Institute of Justice conducted a national study of seven mental health programs for correctional officers. Common features of each of the programs were professional counseling, peer mentoring, and debriefing on critical incidents. A critical difference in the professional counseling service was whether the providers were outside the county network, which enabled the providers to develop a closer, more trusting relationship with the officers. What about our officers at our jail? A best, a best place to start is to find out what their thoughts are regarding these issues. I hope to be partnering with the University of Pittsburgh or Duquesne University to administer a comprehensive service to our officers. Your increased attention and willingness to support and find ways to improve the mental health of our officers is critical to help us move forward with this project. Thank you.
Lori Vallman. Richard Tomorella. Bernadette Lapari. Barbara Brandon. Amy Crye. Joe Ventura. John McCormick. And last up, Brian Engler.
Good evening, council. I'm Brian Engler. I live in Council District 9. I'm an Allegheny County employee. I'm also president of the Correctional Officers Union at the jail. I'm a father, I'm a husband, I'm a brother. I'm 49 years old, and according to what John has just talked about, I probably have 13 years left to live. Now, that might sound like a long time, but let me tell you what'll hit you like a load of bricks: 13 summers. I don't have 13 years, I have 13 summers. And summer flies real quick, and I got to tell you, I'm bringing the concerns of my members about the pension article recently, about how it's projected to be out of money in 15 years. And when I read that $45 million in contributions came from county employees, I looked to see